Okay, great. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the January 28th, 2025, meeting of the Hatfield Select Board. Our colleague Ed is not feeling completely up to snuff, so he is joining us by Zoom. Hi, Ed. He's waving. So I'm going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. As usual, I'm going to open the meeting by reading our public participation policy. The Hatfield Select Board welcomes everyone to its meetings and all other public meetings of the town of Hatfield. All regular and special meetings of the boards and committees of the town of Hatfield shall be open to the public and shall conform to the open meeting law. Executive sessions are closed to the public and will be held only as prescribed by the statutes of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. It is important to recognize that the open meeting law affords the opportunity to listen to the proceedings but not necessarily participate. During meetings of the Select Board, an attempt will be made to find a balance between hearing from members of the community and conducting the required business of the Hatfield Select Board. So I'm really happy to... We'll start with the wonderful announcements. Yeah, the good news. So we have quite a group here tonight, which is just so lovely to see because they're all here in honor of Irma Donnis. So I just want to read a little something that's been prepared for me, if you'd just bear with me. So every few years, the town clerk submits to the Select Board a candidate for the Boston Post Golden Kane Award, which is presented to the oldest resident living in the town of Hatfield. It is my pleasure this year to present the certificate of recognition to Irma W. Donnis. Irma is celebrating her 100th birthday today. That's really quite remarkable, and how beautiful that you're all here to show support for her. So Irma Keaton was born in Kentucky on January 28th, 1925. She moved to Ohio as a teen. She worked during World War II at the Commerce Building in Washington, D.C. Her job was tracking warships. Pretty cool. Her older sister, Cloma, met Henry Donnis during that time at the Marine Corps. She was maid of honor and met her future husband Bernard Donnis, Henry's brother, when he was best man. They married at the Baptist Church in North Hampton in 1948. Bernard worked as a lumberman at Donnis Lumber, and they raised four children in Hatfield. We all fondly remember Donnis Lumber, of course. William, Joan, David, and Paul are the four children, and you're all here. Except Joan. Joan is deceased, I'm sorry. Irma was the epitome of a housewife. You could often find her outside gardening. She had the nicest yard in town and loved her neighbors. Is this the Gray Ranch on Elm Street? Yes, it was always immaculate. Yes, yes, yes. Now, at the age of 100, she has three remaining children, nine grandchildren, nine great-grandchildren, and the 10th expected in two months. How beautiful. Her name will be included on a plaque that hangs in Town Hall with the names of all previous Boston Post Golden Kane recipients. So we do have a certificate here that I do want to sign. Hang on one second. I'm going to have my colleague Greg sign it, too. So on behalf of the Select Board and the entire town of Hatfield, you know, we want to congratulate Irma, wish her a happy birthday, present... You already have the cane, which is really lovely, but we have a certificate to present as well. And I understand that the Gazette interviewed her, so today's...
And the one question we forgot to ask is what day it's going to be in the paper.
They're usually pretty quick, so I would expect it would be within the next couple of days. So we'll all have to watch for that. What a lovely piece of news out of Hatfield, so...
Thank you very much.
Yeah, and how sweet that you... We're all mic'd up here, so I can't move too far, I'm sorry. Yes, thank you. It sounds like she was... is a lovely person, and that's a nice... And I just want to, you know, thank you so much, Elena, for recognizing that, you know, putting that all together, because I'm sure you did. It's really nice. You know, over the years, over the years of being Select Board, I'm the Select Board, I think I've presented the cane twice, and it's a really... This is probably my third time. It's really a nice, nice honor.
Have you seen the cane by any chance?
This one? I believe I have, yes.
Yes, it's quite well done.
Yeah.
It's quite impressive, and I think it's quite an artifact of the town keeping their possession.
Yeah, I think it passes from resident to resident, right?
Oh, it's in the vault here. Okay, great. Normal, it stays.
So what a lovely... So thank you so much for coming.
Thank you.
And, yeah, very nice.
Jerry suggested a picture. Do you want to try to... They can stand behind the desk or something?
Oh, sure, that would be really nice.
You want to try?
Yeah. If you come behind us, we don't have to de-wire.
Kind of smile, and yeah, that'll be great.
You want... We could... Maybe if we even stay seated, that'll make for a better picture. All around. That's so nice.
Elena, you're up. If you want... Yeah, you can set this up.
Oh, yes.
I think that'd be great.
Yeah, Elena, you should be over here, too.
Yeah, you can go right there.
Maybe fill in with Greg here.
Right, you can head on down behind them. Great. That is great.
Maybe push the... Put the paper down.
Yeah, just hold. There you go.
There you go. How's it look, Jerry?
All right, smile.
Great, nice idea, Jerry. Thank you so much. Thank you very much. Congratulations. Yes, of course.
Today, that's so fun.
Can we end it there?
Okay, and so that was the good news for announcements. It's not really bad news, but we have had some building closures last week and this week because of our ongoing floor project. So Andrew, I'll let you speak to that, because I know you've been really in the thick of it.
Sure, I'll speak to this quickly. So we have a project going on right now to renovate the floors in Town Hall. This is in the basement space. The contractor has been doing great work. They intend to finish by the end of this week, May, leading into next week, but they're doing really well. They actually expanded the size of their crew today, and that was very helpful. They were working with some products last week that did have some fumes that didn't smell very good, and the decision was made to close Town Hall last Friday and also into today... Into Monday yesterday, when we knew there would be some products being used that were somewhat concerning for everyone. So that is complete, those products, but today they started with the adhesive that's being used for the floors, and that's a pretty strong smelling glue as well. So the Town Hall will be closed tomorrow. If you need to contact any individual offices, some of them have contact information listed online, all of them have emails, and we'll be happy to help. I plan to be here as long as my office is ventilated pretty nicely, but if anyone needs anything, we should have some coverage. So we'll definitely be closed tomorrow, potentially closed on Thursday as well if there's still a flying back glue product. So we'll continue to post on the doors of Town Hall and online and on Facebook. If you have any questions, please be in touch. But this is just for the safety of residents and visitors and of Town Hall staff. I really want to thank people of Hatfield and all our employees here for being so flexible during this project. I think we've been able to meet most needs. Jerry's done a fantastic job with still having a place for seniors to come. We have a lot of vulnerable people who come here for meals and for activity, and we've been able to keep that for the most part. But we do have to put safety first, so we've had some closures, and I think we'll still be able to continue with COA activities tomorrow in a pretty well-ventilated part of Town Hall, but otherwise, we will just meet the needs as best we can.
No, thanks, that's a great, you know, description of everything. I mean, it's really fairly brief interruption, you know? I'm sure it's, you know, not very convenient for everybody here and maybe for some residents, but I appreciate... You've been great about communicating everything to us, and, you know, like I said before, progress sometimes is a little uncomfortable, but we're getting there, right? So Jerry, thanks for hanging in there. And I just want to mention that Chief Flaherty has been ventilating the building, which I appreciate very much. I didn't smell too much when I came in. You know, it's a little something, but it's...
The glue is definitely worse just when they're putting it down. Even by the time the crew finished up, it was a lot better, but also huge thanks to the chief and his team for coming in and getting some of the fumes out of here. It worked out great.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks, chief. Okay, so anyone here for public forum? No. Okay. So the first order of business is our consent agenda, which is approval of the minutes of Jan... Ed, I'm sorry, did you want to... Did you have anything, Ed, for announcements or anything?
No, I don't have anything. I just want to give my congratulations to the Donnis family. They've been in town for quite a long, many generations, and the lumberyard was there, and they have a great mom, so congratulations to them.
Very nice, Ed. Okay, so we're gonna... I'll take a motion to approve the minutes of the January 14th.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes, the meeting minutes of January 14th, 2025.
I'm not going to vote on that, because I do not have them in front of me, so...
Okay, do you want to hold off? How about if we just hold off? I mean, we could vote, we've got a... We could... Do you mind if we vote them in, Ed?
You go right ahead and vote for them, that's fine.
Okay, I'll second that. Motion made, and second any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the first order of posted business, we're going to dive right into some budget presentations. The first one up is our police department. Come on up to the mic. Hang on. Now, is this... Let me find it. There's nothing... We didn't get any changes, right?
There have been changes on police budget.
Hang on. I just have to find it, Mike. Oh, I've got a copy, I just have to... Because I'm trying to keep all of this organized. Hang on. It's heading there. My goodness. Okay. No. Oh, this is wrong. Hang on. Okay, I've got it. Okay, sorry. I'll give you the floor.
So the budget this year, I level funded the entire thing, so you'll notice in the salaries, there's no COLA for the staff. I didn't put any of that in as that was going to be decided at some point in time during this process. The only increase in the salaries was a contractual increase under my contract for fiscal '26. Other than that, everything else is fairly identical to FY '25.
Okay. So if I'm looking at this... So yours doesn't have the breakdown from the actual for 2024 to this request?
FY '24 to FY... Or FY '25's budget? No.
FY '24's actual to FY '25, there's no compare... Is there... Is it level funded, or is it just going up by your contractual?
Just going up by my contractual.
Okay. See how that's not totaled? Do you see what I mean? Okay. Let me just make a note for myself.
I can provide Andrew with the '25 and the '24.
Okay.
If you would like it for comparison, that's easy enough to do.
Yeah, I'd just like to have it. Okay. I mean, that's pretty straightforward, and then a decision will be made about COLAs across the board.
Yes.
Yeah.
That's the plan of the finance.
Yeah. Okay. So this provides the same level of shifts and everything, which is... What are the shifts now?
So right now, it's obviously Monday through Friday, and that covers from essentially 6:00 in the morning until midnight, and then on the weekends, it's two 12-hour shifts, 10:00 a.m. to... Or no, noon to midnight on Saturday and noon to midnight on Sunday. So like we discussed several years ago, due to the reform and everything and losing our part-timers, it's without more full-time staff, we really can't get back to that 16 hours a day, seven days a week coverage at this point, so... Not without adding people.
Okay, but what about during the day? So there's two... You and Clint are both on during the day. There's no way to rotate Clint so that we could have?
It's hard to predict what a slow day will be and what a slow day isn't, you know? Today, we needed both of us all day long. There's other days where, you know, two people aren't needed, but how do you... How do I judge? I guess that...
I mean, are the shifts always covered on the weekends?
Yes.
And so there's one officer on?
One officer, yeah. Yeah, I mean, eventually, we're... I mean, the discussion really should come down to...
I mean, isn't... Is there more police activity at night?
Again, there's no way to judge that. I mean, there's busy... There's busy Tuesdays, you know, and quiet Saturdays, quiet Friday nights, and a busy Monday, you know? So there's just no way to judge, you know, what's going to happen.
I mean, I understand that. We all, you know, obviously talked to Bob about that same kind of stuff, but, I mean, we just have two people on every day, you know, where it just seems... I don't know if it could rotate so that there's, you know...
I get that, and I understand that. I think it just comes down to, I don't think people understand exactly what goes on, like, during the day. That is when literally everything is happening when it comes to... The night shift has very little responsibilities other than patrol and answering calls. They don't have any of reports that are being filed with the state or with the federal government. They don't have the pistol permitting going on. So if there was one person on... We only do one person on during the week if I'm out, if I'm on vacation or something like that, or Clint is on vacation, we stretch it to one, but it makes it so that I can do pistol permits when people come in. So the police department's a revolving door during the days, during the week time, with people coming in and going out, whether it be for whatever questions or pistol permits or this and that. Something would have to give at that point in time, either... I mean, I have to go on calls, right? So pistol permits would have to give, reports, something would have to give at that point in time. So if you look at it as productivity or whatever you want to call it, something is going to fall by the wayside there without having that second person, which is why we went to that second person almost 15 years ago.
Okay, I mean, I just wanted to ask about it. I... I mean, I guess I don't... I honestly don't know much about what a typical day looks like for the department, honestly.
You're free to come hang out with us. Just bring earplugs. Don't get easily offended.
Okay, I mean, I... That was my que... I just had that question, but about... Do you have anything?
No, it's nice and easy.
Ed?
No, nothing. I mean, the only question with the police department over the years is a cruiser. Is that still on the Capitol planning? I'm just curious.
It is for this year, yes. I've been asking for the past couple of years, so we're at that... We're at that point.
And we'll have to have a discussion about what's coming up if you're retiring something, because I know last year there was a lot of discussion around you wanted to keep one, and we decided not to...
I would like to keep all of them.
Yeah, right.
Absolutely. Then something becomes a true spare car. Right now, the spare car is being used probably 24 hours a week or more at this point in time, so eventually we'll be at two cruisers if that keeps up, so...
And that's a discussion we'll have at Capitol Plan. I think you're coming in to... Are you coming in to talk about that?
Yeah, I'm scheduled to, yeah.
Okay.
So, and with that being said, I mean, it... I don't know what the insurance is on it. That's essentially what the expense to the town is on that spare car for, you know, for emergency backup car.
Okay. Okay, I don't have any more questions. Thanks for submitting, you know, a level funded with the exception of the things you can't control.
Right.
Yep. Okay, I would like to just get that number plugged in there.
Yeah, we can provide that. I work with the sheets, make sure you get that. I will say, just looking at my spreadsheet, that includes those things. Chief's pretty good about being on target with spending across categories, so nothing's really below, say, 30% use, and nothing's really above 50% use from my numbers, which end in December, so it's a good thing.
So the... So these would be fairly accurate?
Fairly accurate, it's a good target.
I mean, I don't think we've ever had any surprises with your budget.
I never go over. Sometimes I have to transfer from one line to another line depending on if something drastic, you know, happens within expense or something like that, but other than that, I can...
Yep. Okay. Anything? Do you have any questions, or...? No? Okay.
I have no questions.
What's that? Nope, I'm good. Painless.
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you. Okay. Next, we're doing fire, right?
We're going to do COA first, I think.
COA first, okay.
Because then the chief has another agenda item after.
Oh, Mike does?
No, sorry, the fire chief.
The fire... Yeah, right, okay. I just want to make sure... I've got some extra documents here, so I just want to see what I'm... Okay. Jerry, come on up, and Sean. Hi, Sean. How's it going?
Good. How's everyone? Thank you all very much.
Yeah, I'm just trying to...
Take your time.
I'm trying to...
Hey, Andrew. Greg, thanks for stopping by. I saw you at the event. I know it was a little crazy, but...
I didn't make it, and I was so bummed. I was so bummed, because you know I'm a big supporter of what you're doing out there. I bet it was, and I was really sorry to miss it.
I'd never been, and it was really, really, really exciting. I really liked it a lot.
Thank you.
It's a proud place for the town.
Yeah. And nice to see you getting such, you know, recognition really on a national level, right?
Yeah, those people from all over.
Yeah, 175 people from 26 states. It was pretty cool.
Wow! Look at you go! That's amazing. Okay, so let's talk numbers.
Yes, so I'll say a few things, and then Jerry will jump in. As always, the Council on Aging does a ton with very little. You know, each year, we do ask for modest increases, usually in the amount of hundreds of dollars, or at the most, $1,000 or two. This year isn't much different. This year, we've got a modest budget increase of $1,775. I first note that we had 12,470 duplicated visits, so that means people came to the center 12,470 times. Might have been, you know, a couple hundred individuals, but came that number of times. Many of you know our excellent programming. This year, we've had everything from, you know, solar presentations, from Smith College professors, to meteorologist Jana Brown, to winter birds and spring migration presentations, to educational programming like nutrition, meditation, estate planning, foot care. So we do typically, I think, eight-plus special events a month, plus our daily lunch, and then provide the van service, taking people to their grocery and doctor's appointments. So we're doing a lot there. This year, we did our summer picnic, where over 80 people attended. What I was particularly impressed by was the beautiful job Jerry did with the Veterans' Day breakfast for anyone who was able to go to that. I mean, the room was beautiful, and it was packed. That's one thing I've noticed at all of the events, they're often packed. The tree lighting was something new that we added this year. That was great, a lot of young families and seniors interacting together, so that was the beginning of a beautiful tradition. So as you've seen over the last few years, the Council on Aging continues to increase our programming, improve things that we've already done, like our newsletter, a couple years ago now, we went to a color newsletter, a larger newsletter, more people are reading it, so we've had tremendous success asking very little. How have we done that? We've done that by going out with our friends, through our friends, and raising the money. The reality is that the... If Hatfield was covering the full cost of our events and services and whatnot, that'd be around $21,000 instead of the $9,000, so we're actually raising more than we get from the town for our events. Any... Most of the money we get from the town goes towards staff, and largely, that's van drivers, a director, and a part-time person who are coordinating all of these events. Two part-time people, but like, part-time, very part-time, coordinating all of these events. So it's a lot. This year, we're asking for a slight increase, and we outline why, and that's largely more newsletter costs. We continue to increase the programming and the entertainment. I mean, jeez, if you think about just that tree lighting alone to get that, and all we're asking for for the year is an extra $400 for those. Our licensing software just went up, but that's what helps us track the data that's required for grants that we get. And then we think it's important this year that our staff be able to attend the national ... Or I'm sorry, the state Council on Aging Conference, just which is in the eastern part of the state. Because as we grow, as we introduce new programs, as we look for new resources, there's a lot we can learn and find out by being at these events and interacting with other people who are doing similar work in other communities. So we think, given the success that Jerry's had, it would be great for her to be able to, one, share the great news of the work we're doing in Hatfield, but also bring some new ideas and new resources back, and if you wanted to share those.
Yeah, so as you can tell, I love what I'm doing. I love working with the seniors in town, and that's what it's all about. It's not about the staff, it's about the people. And so getting as many programs and a variety of different programs into the center is what important... Is what's important to us. I've been here now for five years. The first year, you know, we had COVID going on, so I just wanted to give you some of the numbers. So in 2021, duplicated participants were 7,622. 2022 went up to 10,584. 2023 was 12,470, and 2024 was 14,764. So we're increasing yearly. Obviously, the funding that we receive, we're very grateful for, but however, we have to supplement that, and that's being supplemented from one, our friends at the COA, and they contributed last year $7,625. And then the senior center donation account. A lot of the residents in town continue to provide donations to us, and we use $4,284 of that. So it was a total of $11,909 that we received from outside, from the friends and from our account.
Yep, and the Council on Aging space, I think, has never looked better, continues to look better, and, you know, I think it's... There were years where there was a lot of chatter, we need this new council. That's quieted down quite a bit. People are quite happy with how that space presents itself, so I think that's to Jerry's credit. She's an artist, too. I think that plays a big part.
No, and it's been great, and I know we've made people a little uncomfortable with all this stuff going on downstairs, and hopefully by the end of the week, it'll be over with. I did go downstairs. They're doing a fantastic job. I said the half... Part of the floor is already down, and, you know, the guys are very nice. They're very nice. They've done a fantastic job, and it looks wonderful down there. So it'll be nice, and it's done right this time. I don't think you'll have a problem.
One thing that I liked is that the tree lighting, I ran into several young families downstairs in the Council on Aging who had no idea that the Council on Aging was even there, you know, and they were enjoying the space and saying how beautiful it was.
Yeah, you actually reached a lot of people with that event, and...
Well, you know, when I came here, I was like, you know, it's a nice, small town, and I thought, where's your Christmas tree or whatever, as you do every year? But I kept looking at those trees that were out there, and like, they should be lit.
Really nice.
And so that's what we tried, you know, this year, and it did. I was a nervous wreck, wondering how it was going to turn out and how many people. I know Karen, I ran into Karen was there, and it was just heartening to see how many came out that night, and it was a cold, cold night, you know?
So I think you can expect that that number to 50% or more next year.
Oh, yeah, for sure. I mean, I...
So I started...
I believe my daughter and her friends went.
Yes.
Like, there was a lot of, of young people there too, which is really nice.
And I'm hoping that the departments will join them with me for next year to plan it and, you know, maybe grow it, have some things out there for the kids and.
Get the school to, with their chorus or band or something like that to come and stuff like that, you know.
Yeah.
Try to get that.
Very nice. Well, I mean, I, you know, budget-wise, I really don't have any questions. I mean, you've, you've done a good job of, you know, keeping this, you know, very reasonable request. I guess I would just add, you know, I personally had the chance to, you know, experience your services this year with, with my mother-in-law coming down and having lunch and, you know, coming with her and actually riding the van with her and everything. Your, your staff has been really great. To, to her and to, to me. I ride on the bus like once a month and, or the van and it's been really a nice experience for us. So just wanted to add that.
To be able to offer that service, just that van service alone, to me is worth that amount of money, you know, so congrats for all your hard work.
Well, and you know, when you, when, when I go down there, you know, when I've gone down there, there's people playing games, my, you know, she's been able to take as many books as she wants and you bring them back when you can and it's been really nice. So you're doing a great job. Anything?
I agree. They're doing a great job. I, I enjoyed the tree lighting. That was really fun. I hope you'll do it again.
I missed all the good events. I missed the tree lighting. I missed your event.
Is this the first annual?
I missed the veterans breakfast.
You say party, I'm there.
Thank you.
Ed, is there anything? I don't want to forget that you're with us.
I'd like to say a special thank you to Sean and Jerry and Cookie and Al and all her staff and coordinators. They really built up the program. It's, it's an outstanding program downstairs. So, and it's nice they can come in front of the town and show off a little bit about all the good things they're doing for the residents and the seniors for the town of Hatfield. So thank you very much, Sean and Jerry and everybody else involved.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's true. Cookie should get a shout out and the Friends.
Yes, the Friends especially.
That's a really.
Yep, and they volunteer, they, they spend a lot of hours volunteering, meeting, planning these events. They work hard.
Yeah, they do. The Black Birch event is so nice.
Thank you.
And we usually have probably about 90 residents that come from other towns.
Yep, it's been great, you know, and then our residents get to go to their towns for their special events, which has been great. So, so you can have a whole network of events and activities if you're a senior in town looking for something to do, call Jerry. She's got a lot of events.
I wear a lot of hats. I wear a lot of hats.
Well, thank you very much. Any other questions for us?
No, I'm.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Chief Clarity. I've lost my agenda. But I do know you're next.
Yes, yes, he is.
Okay, so we're gonna take up the conference thing later, right?
Yeah, right after the budget portion.
Okay, the floor is yours.
Uh, so if you look at it, I, once again, this year I did not submit three budgets. I did two budgets. Instead of the last couple of years, we had done three.
Yep.
Uh, the top one essentially is an FY26. It's level service, similar to Chief de Koshak on the fire side. Essentially, the only increase is a contractual obligation. And that is it for that. On the ambulance side, which will come from ambulance fund, funding and ambulance revenue, it's a total of a 2% increase. We lowered some salaries, but some expenses came higher and part of that is to do with the, the new software that we're just about ready to implement. That's an all-encompassing, so everything will be in one. So that's really the, the only change.
So that's on the, the, okay.
EMS side, so the ambulance.
Yeah, hang on. I, I want to look at that, but I have a question about fire. So, okay, wait a sec. Sorry, yours are sideways.
Yeah.
Okay, so, um, so let me go back to fire. I just have a question because, so I'm looking at the level service. And so there are some lines that go up slightly.
Yes.
Okay, so that's level service.
There's others that'll, that have dropped.
So the level ser, yep, so the level service one goes up about $18,000. If I'm reading this right.
No. The level service on the fire side, the expenses stay the exact same and the salary goes up the 3,000. That's a.
Okay, so that's the, okay, so it's really three. I'm sorry.
Yep.
Three.
Yep, that's, that's the only difference.
In level services.
There are, there are changes on the individual lines. If you go line by line, some, a couple of them go up, but then a couple of them go down to make up a difference. So this expense stays the exact same.
Okay. And then emergency management is. Okay, and then.
But the ambulance, even on the level service, there's, the total budget goes up $2,463. Total difference. Salaries went down 27. And then the expenses.
I'm sorry, say that again, on level service.
Level service ambulance.
Ambulance, okay.
So it's essentially, it's a 2% change. Salaries went down 2742. And then some of the expenses went up a little, just over $5,200 and most of that has to do with the new software that we're running. And that would come from ambulance revenue.
Oh, yeah, I see this, the licensing, the software.
Yes.
Okay. So that's level.
Not huge changes across that.
Level services, okay.
And emergency, emergency management is the same as it's been for six or seven years now.
Diana?
Yeah.
Quick question for Chief.
Yes, of course.
Does that include, does this include any bonus for any of your employees besides yourself?
No.
Okay, so everybody gets paid the same right now?
Correct.
Got it.
Okay. And then the next one. The next budget is the 24-hour model.
Correct.
And so that.
Can I just add, was there any questions on the level service before we kind of move into the bigger picture?
I don't think so. That looks pretty straightforward.
So I'll make sure that we don't have to go back and forth a couple of times.
I, I don't think, I, I was good. Ed, did you have any questions on his level services? Did you, do you have that in front of you?
No, I'm, I'm good.
Uh, so then, uh, once again, you know, the, it'll ultimately be the third year that we're at least bringing to the town or presenting to you folks the 24/7 model for staffing for fire and ambulance. Many of the categories or a huge chunk of the categories on the fire budget are ultimately going to stay the same. There are a couple, couple here and there that have a few things that change, uniforms, PPE and so forth. I think physicals go up again a little bit because hiring a few extra folks. And then obviously the, the largest increase would be the salary side. And if any of these were to change, the presumption is, is that this would ultimately require an override due to the, the big dollar amount that it entails.
So the, um, the salary line, under this budget, the salary line, not, not, this is excluding you because the chief's salary is, is separate. But, so this would be other full-time employees. In this year's budget, that was $73,400 and it would go up to actually 320, 327,000?
Correct.
With an offset from ambulance revenue of $45,000. So you're, you would be asking, under this scenario, for an extra basically $200,000, 210,000.
Yeah, if you look at the overall for the.
Oh, wait a sec, then there's part-time and per diem that goes up by 100,000.
Correct.
And an extra 65,000 in holiday overtime and training. So do you, I mean, what's the math on this, Bob?
So on the last sheet, you'll actually see.
Oh, yeah.
You'll see the totals of, from one to the next of where we are. So obviously it's a substantial from where we're at.
Doubles, doubles your budget.
Yeah, more than.
More than doubles your budget.
Bottom number, essentially, the, the new, the new money so close to the ask would end up being just shy of 400,000 for all in. And this, this budget is essentially built out and it should last us in the vicinity of three to five years. So it wouldn't be a new comeback again and ask. That was what the request was last year. So there's, part of the salaries are including pay that will keep us in line for the next three to five years. With it, there would be pay steps within each rank. So whether or not they're a paramedic or an EMT, so I can kind of build it out. So there's, we don't have to come back again.
So in the, if this ever, if we ever put this to override and it passed, theoretically, in the first couple of years, you could turn money back because you've built those salaries in to project out three years.
There might be some extra money there. And then again, some of this is predicated on, there's money to offset it from ambulance receipts, but we don't know that number until we complete one year, one full year of that, that option.
Okay.
So it's.
What would you do with the nighttime people? Where would they go? Where would they stay?
So last year and this year, submitted a, basically a contingent capital project of a temporary housing that would be out here in the parking lot. The capital project that was submitted was good, was good for three years. All encompassing, it was 45,000, 6,000. Yeah, so that would be the three years lease for that temporary housing to basically buy us the time if that was ultimately the case. So essentially, everything that has been submitted would, would essentially get us covered for at least three years between capital and the overall budget.
And so the only way to fund this would be with an override?
I believe that in the short term, yes, I don't.
Yes, there's not this kind of.
Not the only way, but. Yeah.
Well, well.
Theoretically.
Theoretically, right. We could close up a department and fund it.
I think.
But the only responsible, logical way would be an override. Yeah. So basically, the bottom line is for you to go from what you have today. You're, that, that budget is 475, 642.
Combined, yes.
That's, that's what it is for FY25.
Correct.
That's what it would be to, if it was, that's what your budget is this year.
Correct.
But you, to go.
16 hour.
That's for the 16 hour. But to go up to a 24/7, your total ask would be 871,873.
Correct.
So just shy of 900,000.
The, the total difference is 396,000. So that, that really is the, that would be essentially.
That would be the override number.
Would be just shy of 400,000.
Yep. Plus the trailer.
Correct.
If it couldn't be funded out of whatever for capital. Does that take into consideration benefits? Because that line would go up too.
Nope, because I, I only have partial numbers and in the end, it would be adding only two, this, this proposal is only adding two additional full-time staff in all of this.
But the benefits don't come out of your budget.
Correct. I believe it.
So there'd be an extra increase in the treasurer's line to cover.
Yeah, I believe there would be maybe 60-ish.
Well, I mean, you have to.
It would be, it would be offered to everybody.
It would be offered, right. So, I mean, you have to have the ability.
We pay is low, so not everyone would take it necessarily. It's not like we're paying 70%.
No, no, I understand, but it's still an expense. It's, that has to be discussed and taken into consideration. I mean, you can't just brush it off. It's an expense.
I, I think if we take what was originally figured in as having three full-time staff besides myself, in the whole picture of this, it was at, it would be adding only one more full-time beyond what we're currently slated for. And the rest would be per diem staff.
And so you, but in your, so it's difficult for you to project the increased ambulance revenue.
I, I.
I mean, you've got a number in here.
Yeah, I mean, I, I could tell you that just based off of, you know, the, the missed calls, not, not due to having simultaneous calls was $75,000 this year of lost revenue because of not being staffed. So that, right off the top, that is definitely a number.
And that you factored out simultaneous calls, you said?
Yeah, it was 10 times that we had simultaneous calls that we weren't able to cover.
Which you wouldn't be regardless of your staff, yeah.
Correct.
But this has offset by 45,000 from ambulance revenue.
Correct. So that, that's taking into account some of the funds that we're already currently using. It's just because it would be a change in the model of how the department operates. It's much, some of the money that is already currently allocated out of ambulance revenue. And then when you look at the individual lines, I just tried to break it down so you could see where those funds would actually be going.
Okay.
Why do you keep it separate, the ambulance and the fire departments, fire department stuff?
I was actually told by the accountant that they would prefer to see them left separate. I was going to start joining them. I reached out just to make sure that that was okay and Elizabeth told us DLS might be coming out and saying that they would prefer budgets to not be joined if you have this type of a scenario. So I was ready to just put them all together.
What type of scenario? It's, you're just one department.
Because of, because of having some of the budget funded from ambulance revenue and it's not the entire budget from taxation, easier to figure out apparently on their end. That's what I was told by the accountant. I was ready to just throw it all together and she's like, no, we prefer to actually leave it the way that it is.
I can talk to the accountant and see if there's, there's any interest in, in doing that. I, I can see the argument for making them separate cost centers, but since the, the tasks are so merged by this point, the personnel are one of the same. The time is spent pretty much the same way. It tends to be distinct without a difference.
I agree.
It's gotta be more hard for you to follow.
It, it's not the easiest budget when you have both sides of this. I was ready, ready to put it all together and I, I asked Elizabeth. She's like, no, they.
It's like, how do you figure out, like, some salaries are ambulance and some are fire and they're the same person? I mean, I don't.
Yep. I mean, currently, essentially, the full-timers are basically funded from ambulance revenue. We're part of their, their salaries or ambulance revenue and some of it. And then the per diems essentially are currently all pretty much under the fire budget.
Yeah.
I'd be happy to join it all together. Certainly make life easy.
Well, obviously, that's, you know, it's, it's good to have those numbers and I appreciate that you gave them to him and that's a big discussion we'll have as we're looking at the big picture stuff. Did either of you want to pipe in at all? Okay, so we also have, we don't have to vote, but well, we have you right here. We have a new full-time firefighter?
Correct. So full-time firefighter, EMT, Mr. Jeremy Rice from Leverett. He will be starting on Monday, February 3rd.
Okay.
So he, Jeremy will be replacing Jacob Sandborn, who left the full-time position at the end of last February. So we're finally getting somebody back.
So we don't have to vote this, we just sign it.
Correct.
Ed, did you want to pipe in at all? I don't want to forget you there.
No, my only question is right now, for full-time folks that we have of only a couple of paramedic level and the others are basic is, or how does that work?
So the only full-time paramedic is me. And then we'll have two full-time firefighter, EMT basics as of Monday. So the only full-time paramedic is me. And then we'll have two full-time firefighter, EMT basics as of Monday.
Well then, on certain calls, we still have to get Northampton for, I believe it was like stroke or heart attack. Is that correct?
It would depend on if other per diem paramedics are also working. So for instance, right now, tonight in the parking lot, it's, we are currently staffed at the medic level. Actually from now all the way through Sunday evening, I think, or Saturday evening. Every shift, the 16 hours a day is all at the paramedic level with per diem staff or myself.
And how are we doing with the missed, sorry, Ed, I'm sorry, go ahead. How are we, are, how are we doing with missed calls and?
Uh, so 2024, we more than doubled the amount of missed calls from '23. We had 151 total missed calls.
And how, what was the total call volume?
490.
So roughly a third of our calls
Correct.
Are missed and some are simultaneous. You said there's, there was
10 out of, 10 out of the 151 were simultaneous. Three were turned over to another service because our ambulance was either, you know, getting an inspection sticker, the annual
Like out of service or whatever. Yep.
We had a couple of things that had to happen. So the truck had to go out of service for a few hours here and there. And a call happened to come during that time period. It's just part of the business.
Okay. And of the, maybe you don't, this, maybe this is just too granular. So the missed calls were, were just unfilled shifts.
Correct. Out of the 151, 115 actually ended in a transport.
So now you have full, two full-time basics and you have one spot left open and you want, we're still hoping for that to be a paramedic.
I have, there's, three of our basics are near 60 days, 90 days away from becoming paramedics. So we'll end up having even a couple more paramedics that'll be working. And we've added a couple of other new basics that are working out pretty well. They're picking up pretty regular shifts. I think having the vacancy from the full-time firefighter, EMT position has definitely hurt us over the last 11 months. Um, it wasn't for a lack of trying. We just could not get people to, to take the job. Um, or they weren't qualified enough to take the position. I think this will fix that because this will give us six out of an eight-day rotation of 16 hours with at least a firefighter basic on shift, no matter what.
So you think that your difficulty filling positions will go away under the 24/7 plan?
Yes. Two, more than three quarters of our current per diem staff would prefer to come and work one 24-hour shift a week as a paramedic. Most of, most of the paramedics are all into that.
But that's per diem.
Correct.
But if you're talking about 24/7, you're not going to be doing per diems. You're going to
Nope, those are per diems. It would only, the basics would be the only full-time positions and the medic spots would end up being per diem. More than enough paramedics to go around to take, to pick up one shift per week. Cause within the next couple of months, I'll have 14 paramedics on the roster, 15, sorry.
That are regularly taking shifts. Cause I know the roster's been, you know, in the past long, but not always
Correct.
Active. Yeah.
We've, we've moved on from a couple of the folks that weren't picking up shifts. They were given notices and they did not comply. So we had to move on.
Well, I mean, we've got the information and now we'll have to have the discussions at some point. Okay. That it on the budget? Your next item here is you're asking for permission to travel to Arizona. Is this the one you were going to get some? Wasn't there something you were going to get selected for or something?
This was the same conference that I put in a request for last year and it was the station design conference. And by the time we were able to, I was able to get in front of you to get permission and then I went to book the trip. It went up about $285 for the cost of the trip. So I was no longer able to, to fund it through the budget as I saw it at that time.
Oh.
So same exact thing, same exact location. I'm actually gonna, I was looking at this again the other day. I'm probably actually going to go for one less day than I was originally planning, um, just because they've changed up a little bit of their itinerary. And as it sits right now, I found some relatively inexpensive flights and the hotel prices aren't all that bad either. So it would definitely all be covered within the budget.
Um, and so this is specifically a firehouse station design conference.
Correct. It's a lot of architects, a lot of other folks about how you go about potentially starting a process. Or where do you even begin in a process as large as this? Cause it's a, it's a very big undertaking.
What, what, like other, I mean, you know, there was a lot of public safety complexes built around here, like Habley's went online not that long ago in North Habley. Did they do this or did they?
I, I honestly, I don't know if they had gone out for one. I know some of the architects that are at this particular conference are from the East Coast. I recognize a few of the names of ones that have built fire stations or public safety buildings specifically on the East Coast and even in New England.
Is any part of the conference dedicated to like resources and maybe exploring federal options or anything like that?
There, there's about 12 different classes. I don't remember the topics on all of them. I know some of them are, you know, the building process, where do you start? Uh, I didn't see any on seeking grants, but I can't swear by that, that it wasn't there. And then there was, you know, how do you build a building for sustainable energy and a couple of those as well. It's about six or seven different, you know, one or one and a half hour seminars per day.
What do you want to get out of this?
I think for me, basically it's just where, where would we start and what is the answer? You know, what, what goes into the process and then what potentially would be the best course of action if, you know, as the town's continuing to make changes, where would we have to go from that? You know, is new or is renovating really the better option? I, I don't have that answer. That's part of some of the stuff that they talk about there.
I mean, I think we know renovating wouldn't be an option because we'd be in the floods.
Correct. It would certainly be the cheapest option, but not necessarily the most
We're just about done renovating over there.
Most ideal situation.
That place is over renovated.
I mean, you know, we, we, you know, out of state travel, we it's rare. It's pretty rare. It's within your budget. I mean,
We were okay with it last year.
Yeah, we were okay with it last year. So, I mean, I, I we have to start thinking about it no matter what. So
And I guess that's kind of the hope is that I potentially be able to come back with some answers of if this comes up in the next couple of years, we actually already have some of the answers instead of starting then, knowing that most of these projects turn into, you know, seven to 10 years from start to finish. I know, you know, Greg was part of the East Hampton complex and I'm pretty sure that was about 12 years from start to finish.
Forever.
Yeah, you, you do have to start somewhere. I, I, I would be, you know, much more excited about it if they also talked about funding sources. You know, obviously not state level because it's a nationwide, but of, you know.
There, there's not really a lot out there right now. And unfortunately, I think we've looked into this a few years ago before we did the renovation out back. And just because of our median income in Hatfield, like we don't qualify for some of the low income.
Right.
I know that at the state and the federal level, they are still working on trying to get a bill across for public safety buildings.
Yeah.
It's still in its infant stages.
Bob and I spoke to Anne Govey about that when she was out here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it's there. It's
And the problem is you do have to be ready when these things become available. Sorry, go ahead, Dave.
I may be able to network with some folks out there too about, how did you guys get it going and finding the money to pay for your
Well, I'm assuming if they're there, they're all looking to get it going, but maybe, yeah. So, I mean, we did approve it last year. It is within your budget. I don't have a problem with it. Ed, do you have any questions or anything you want to add?
No, I mean, we approved it last year. So how can we say no this year? And maybe, maybe there's some information that the chief will come back with that'll be beneficial to the town. Cause we, we're probably years away from building, but maybe there's a source for funding that he bumps into or grants or something that may help us.
Wouldn't that be nice? Okay.
That would be the hope.
Okay.
I'll make a motion.
Do we have to make a motion to allow for out-of-state travel?
I know you did last year.
Yeah, if you did last year.
I guess it doesn't hurt to vote it. So you'll make a
I'll make a motion to approve the fire chief to attend the station design conference in Arizona in May.
Ed, I, I will go ahead and second that motion made and second any further discussion. All those in favor? Aye. Ed, do you want to vote on that? It looks like he may have stepped away for a second. Okay. Okay. Safe travels. Okay. So topic three is a conservation restriction. My goodness, this looks complicated.
Fortunately, there's no action on the conservation restriction itself.
Okay.
This is about an update.
Thanks for sitting through all of this.
No problem.
I'll give you the floor. Sure.
I just, just before I start, I just wanted to, I, I just found out that a longtime chair of the open space committee, Peter Cox, passed away.
Really?
Yeah. And, uh, you know, Peter was the chair of the open space committee from about 2005 to 2018.
Yeah.
So he's a long time serving, very dedicated and served and led during the time when, you know, uh, we doubled, we pretty much doubled our conservation land. We really got going and, and, and completed the Smith Academy Park and we started from scratch, actually establishing trail systems in Hatfield as well. So Peter was just quite involved in all of that and just a very dedicated person. And I hope he, people remember him for, for his dedication to the town and his giving back to the town.
I'm really sorry to hear that. He was a very nice man. So condolences to Joan and the family and so it's too bad.
I'm here for, I think it's simpler than it looks with the handout or whatever.
Really?
A lot of, a lot of Hatfield conserved land, especially around the reservoir has what they call a conservation restriction, which is a restriction on the deed for sale or development of the property and use of the property. So you probably got this map in your handout, this black and white map, which kind of shows the outline of some of the parcels or all the parcels that are under conservation restriction through the Department of Environmental Management. And they hold the conservation restriction. A conservation restriction has to be held by a third party. And usually those third parties are either conservation commissions or other municipalities or land trusts. In this case, the Department of Environmental Management holds the conservation restrictions around the reservoir and many of the parcels. So and every four years they do a monitoring, they, they just go and around the perimeter and through lots of parts of the property that is under conservation restriction to just make sure that the land is being properly taken care of and it's not being abused. So they're going to do that tomorrow. Actually, somebody is going to be monitoring and going through all the land. I'm probably going to
Oh, that's going to be fun tomorrow.
Yeah. Is the weather supposed to be bad?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. Well, we're looking forward to it. One proposal that they offer is to put small little triangular signs on the boundary of the conservation restriction land. And they'll put, and I think you can see it on one of the pages. There's a little photograph that shows. I don't know. It's
Last page here?
Yeah.
So if you give permission, I'll tell him to have that done sometime in the next few months. Someone will come and just put it something like every 150 yards around the perimeter of all the land parcels that are under conservation restriction. So if anyone is hiking or anyone is hunting or whatever, they can see clearly where we're onto Hatfield protected property. So, and that's as far as I know, there's no charge for that and they'll just go ahead and do that. So I don't know if you need to vote on that, but I'd like to tell him one way or another that, that he can go forward with that or not.
No problem. As long as there's no opposition.
Okay. All right.
Can I just ask for this, there's this little inset, for a point of reference, what is this cluster of buildings?
Let me just look at that map. I think that's on Route 5.
Well, I'm sure it's on Route 5. I'm just, I can't
Yeah.
That's got to be near the camping place.
Yeah, the little, yeah, the right-hand side.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, it points an arrow to that section. Yeah.
If I looked at all those vehicles, I could have probably figured that out. Okay.
I know some of the, some of the parcels are kind of sporadic and they're separated from each other. I mean, it would be nice sometime in the future to be able to tie those all together. So we would try to do that and, and have a connecting trail through all of that.
So you, you don't, we, we don't need to vote it, Andrew?
No, I don't think so.
Okay.
Another issue is that there are no trespassing signs. I think some of them might be 30 years old that are put in places that are specifically said to have public access. So I think that those trust, no trespassing signs should come down because according to the conservation restriction that there are some areas, and you can see on that little black and white map, there's kind of a, a key on the right-hand side. And one of those sections says not, um, non-motorized public access. So basically most of the land is accessible to the public. Except for some of the land directly surrounding the reservoir, which is off limits and some of the feeder streams for the reservoir. The rest of it is public access and there are multiple signs around the reservoir that just says no trespassing where there is actually public access allowed as per the conservation restriction. So
How long have the signs been there?
As long, as long as I can remember, yeah.
Some of them are deep back to when the Board of Selectmen, when there was a Board of Water Commissioner.
Oh, so those are old. Yeah.
All the ones are here.
Right. And some of them are not even on Hatfield property and some of them are not on conservation restriction property. So maybe at some point when it's appropriate, I could point out which signs are kind of in the, are not proper. And they could just be removed because
Hey, how would we know? You would know.
I would know. And it's on, it's actually marked on here on that photograph, a photograph page, the aerial photograph. This is, this is called no trespassing signs, that diamond. And there's even more, but it shows the location of some of them. Most of them are
Oh, oh, I see. Yes, this one.
Most of them are outside of the conservation restriction. So most of them would come down. But at some point I could just walk with whomever from the, um, from the water department or whatever and just, we could flag them and, and they could be taken down. I mean, it's not urgent or anything, but they've been there. You know, they do say no trespassing where, uh, public access is allowed. So
Yeah, I would definitely check it with Tony.
Right, right.
It does need to be checked with Tony.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So should I, I can, I can work with Andrew or whatever and Tony.
Yeah, work with Andrew and Tony and
Okay.
I mean, it looks like there's only five of them.
Yeah, it could be five. It could be seven. But yeah, so and one other issue I wanted to bring up was the conservation restriction that passed town meeting in 2016 for the center school property. And I don't know if you remember it, but there was a motion at town meeting to put a conservation restriction on two-thirds of the property behind the center school. And as far as I know, that hasn't been done. I do have the motion with me and I can give a copy to you and Andrew.
I'm sure you must have files on it, Andrew, because it was
Yeah, it was
It passed town meeting.
It did.
Yeah.
Yeah. So
I'll update that.
Yeah.
Again, I can touch base with Andrew and just see what it takes to get that process going. Cause that is a process of of getting approval from state agencies like DCR. Yep.
Great. Do that.
Yep.
Yeah, thank you for bringing that out.
I had a good first meeting with the open space committee and just thought that I had a good first meeting with the Open Space Committee and just thought that these things were worth taking to the Select Board this Thursday, so—
Yeah. And I appreciate that you've been doing that, Andrew, by the way.
The Open Space folks reached out to me, which I really appreciate.
Yeah, I appreciate your meeting with us and we are building more, you know, trails up on Chestnut Mountain and trying to make a loop trail there, so, and we should be opening that in the spring. Just, just more trails open to the public. Yeah. Great.
Well, I appreciate your work, as always, Mark.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Same touch.
Ed, were you all set with Mark? I'm sorry. Okay. Okay, topic five is the Implementation Committee for the Comprehensive Plan.
Did we want to do topic four or—
I'm sorry.
It's your prerogative.
Skipped right over that. Topic four is some discussion around the DPW Director Position vacancy. Do you want to come up or you're just sitting back there? Okay. So at this point, it looks like we've gathered quite a bit of information about this, some of which I just, you know, got, so—
That's what you would have just got. And I'm happy to kind of do this as more of a presentation and go over that since there's a lot of paper that's just come your way.
Yeah.
So you have, in your packet, you were given a great memo that Karen put together—
Yeah, Karen, this is great.
Looking into some comparable communities, mostly just from their websites, maybe their budgets, maybe some extra digging that Karen did. And if we need to look into any of it more, if you see any on there and you're like, I don't think that seems right, we can check into it.
Where's Millville?
Millville, that's a Worcester County one, right? That was—
Is it?
Yeah.
So interestingly, it doesn't seem like a lot of them have DPWs at all. They're still operating with a highway department and a—
That's what we found from this, this analysis. And this was, this was Karen looking into it and it seemed right to me from checking out a few as well. And this was, the way we went about this was a few of them are just close to us, but otherwise, I made a list using the Division of Local Services as a tool where you can filter basically all communities in the state by size, by budget size, by geography. So I took, I took communities from Worcester, Hampshire-Hamden, and Franklin Counties. I don't think I included Berkshire. And at a certain size, so basically high 1,000s to low 5,000s. And then budget size, not too dissimilar from ours. And this was the list that, that we found to look into. So most of them, as, as you said, do not have a centralized DPW staff person. They're mostly run by their individual, either a highway department and then, you know, some of them just have commissions, whatever else, but highway, water, wastewater, which doesn't mean, you know, that was just one part of this analysis. So the other things that we did, I know that, that you were able to speak to some of our superintendents, which was great. I had some conversations with superintendents and staff, which was very helpful. Also went right to the job description that we currently have. And that's in your, it's on your packet, that's in the paper that we handed out to you before this meeting. And again, I will try to get all these things, you know, with, to you sooner in the future, but just thought it's important to get this done. There is, the job description dated January 2010. There's also a matrix that I put together, just kind of breaking down some of those key responsibilities that came from— Yep, that's a matrix there. That comes from the job description as well as looking at just a couple other statutory things that were out there. And broke it into some larger categories. So the way I looked at the DPW Director Position, there's administrative work that's a part of it. Now I'm kind of getting into the content of the memo, but administration, generally talking about recurring legal, financial policy or compliance requirements. Strategy is kind of thinking about the bigger picture decisions that shape allocation of town resources and mitigating risks. Management, talking about direction of people or projects. Technical expertise, that's where we're talking about specific content knowledge that a person in that position would be expected to have and would benefit the department by having that kind of knowledge. And that's what I kind of put these pieces about energy management sustainability that were in the job description. Engineering knowledge and then this basic knowledge of facilities as well. So if you look through this matrix here, it breaks out, I think, some of the larger responsibilities and breaks it into these categories and helps you think about, right now, who's been doing this work. In some cases, we don't really have anyone assigned to it because it would be either by appointment or it's a function of the director. That's kind of it. In other cases, there's a natural person to either be doing it or it's just kind of fallen to that person. So in most cases, it's really the, the individual superintendents. They've been picking up a lot. Some has been picked up by the administrative assistant for DPW. Some's been picked up by me. A lot's been picked up by the highway superintendent. He's been dealing with issues of facilities and streets and really anything else. So, but this is a place to start and kind of thinking of, what is the role of that DPW director? What are the things that we need to make sure are filled by someone else in the interim or can help guide the decision around what a director would do in the long term as well, if you want that position?
Okay. Great. Well, I'm looking forward to having some time with these and, but it looks like a lot of work went into this, so thank you very much. But I need to, I need to have some time with it. Yeah, digest it a little bit. That's great. And I'm, you know, happy to have input from anybody who's here if they want to play Ben at this point. Oh, Ed, yes.
I mean, I've been doing a lot of research on this. I know originally, when the DPW was formed, the DPW director had a lot of control over things. And then over the years, those responsibilities have gone on to the superintendents. So at the last meeting, when Andrew said, you know, we may need an intern to do some stuff, I tried to find out what, because now, when I first came on a board, I used to ask these guys their job description and what they did and they all said they worked together. So they, they all got increased to be superintendents and we have three superintendents and one assistant superintendent. Now, I, one job that may fall through the cracks would be facilities management, but I've been talking to Connor and, and he said that right now, the schools were giving the DPW a stipend of $12,000. If that was slightly increased, they could probably have a point person because basically Phil would get information about what was wrong and calling the contractors. I mean, even the grants, I mean, Marlene did the, most of the work on the mass grant and now Andrew's doing it. The covert, Andrew's doing it. I mean, so some of the paperwork that the DPW director used to do has now been moved to other people. So my question is, I know, do we need a DPW director when we have, let's, if you think about it, we have a fire chief and police chief. We don't have a emergency management director oversee those departments. We have a treasurer's office. We don't have a finance director to oversee those offices. I mean, so I'm, I'm not convinced that this time, I, I see that big chunk of money that if we could find out what exactly won't get done and we could supplement, maybe a little bit more, some money for more time in the office for office or staff support. Or maybe it's something for the schools, a little bit of money for the lead person. So I just, I'm just thinking that way right now. Now, my mind could change if I, if I was given something else, but even in Andrew's report, which I, I am impressed with, Andrew, thank you very much, this is a very in-depth report that you put together. I mean, he even says that is not common by towns for our size to have a director in addition to superintendents. So, I mean, just, you have your superintendents, they have their responsibilities. I mean, and, and actually this year, we're supposed to be moving to electronic payroll, so that will even help everybody even more. So if that finally gets, which I've been hoping for, for since I got on the board. But those are just some of my thoughts. So maybe we're at the point, we should just have a small committee of a few, just to review this. But is there anything right now, Andrew, I just got to ask Andrew a question, is there anything right now that won't get done if we don't have a DPW director or a lead superintendent?
It's a good question, that won't get done. That's sometimes hard to identify the things that aren't being done because there's no one to identify, to tell you that it's not happening part of the time. So I don't want to answer that too conclusively. The two things that jumped out from, from my matrix was, we had combined the role of the DPW director with the responsibilities of a tree warden. So just by statute, I don't think we are required to have a tree warden, but we also don't necessarily have someone doing that. So that's one thing to keep in mind. Same with the ADA coordinator. We'd had the, the Director of Public Works identified as the ADA coordinator. So we don't really have someone filling that role right now. That is required by the state, so we need to identify that. That could be as simple as the Select Board appointing somebody. I believe that would be allowed. Those two jumped out as—
Is ADA on this matrix?
It is. It's number five under Administration.
Sorry.
And then—
As tree warden, usually Garrett's crew takes care of the trees. I know that we had Luke Longstreet volunteering his time, but the legislation and the body was, I'm trying to remember what it was, gave that power to the DPW. So that's why we're going to go out and have a tree warden.
So right now, tree, the tree warden's role is, is also getting them, you know, making those decisions, getting it posted and all of that. You're, who's doing that now? Are you doing that?
Yeah. So, I mean, there's, there's a big chunk of change for this salary and is it, is it due? But it's, you know, I mean, if you have superintendents already doing most of the task, does it make sense? I mean, or does it make sense to move some of that more money for sepatarial support or a handyman for the buildings or, you know, I don't know, I'm just talking out of the box here. But those are the ideas I, I've been thinking about and I'm not saying I have anything concrete right now. It's just, I'm just trying to look at all the different angles on this and see if, if it's beneficial at this point with superintendents to have a director also.
I just think it's such a good time to have this conversation. And, you know, I feel like you had great, you know, input and suggestions, Ed, as always. And I, I guess I feel at this point, everything's on the table. You know, I just want to go through all of this and I want to continue to have conversations with Garrett and Tony and Kenny, if he wants to, and, you know, to, to really understand. And in terms of a committee, I guess I would really like to just see us do it as the board. I don't think we need to form a separate committee on it. I mean, we, I think we're all pretty up to speed and have, you know, good relationships with the, the folks in the department so that we can, you know, learn about this as quickly as possible. I don't think there's a ton of time to wait, particularly it's budget season. So there's going to definitely be, you know, some, some changes. And so that's, that's my, I'm not really saying a lot, but that's my, that's where I'm at right now.
Yeah, I mean, it might not be, after you read through the stuff, maybe it's not a bad idea to have a small committee to look at it and get a little bit more involved. I mean, Andrew gave us a lot of information right here, which is pretty, pretty nice. He did a great job on this, this stuff here.
I don't know, I'm just worried about forming a committee and people needing to come up. I, I just feel a sense of urgency. Dave had a—
I ran into that with the school department last week and went over their budget. And I know one of the things that Connor brought up was the facilities piece of their budget that they're, were contributing to the DPW directors. And it seems like they have some interest in possibly having their own facilities person as part of somebody on their staff and trying to save a few bucks there and not have the DPW director as the facilities person.
I mean, that's the indication I got from Connor.
That deals with the school. So that's a, that's another piece that—
Yeah.
We might save some money, or the school department might save some money in not having to put that $12,000 into the budget every single year. So another consideration for—
As long as they're, you know, that, that work is really being done and really being managed and, you know—
They think they have a person that they can, that was the indication I got. They think they have a person—
Kristi mentioned that at the capital planning—
Who's, who they think they can fill that, fulfill that role.
And it might be a little bit of a change of the role instead of say a facilities director, it's more like a maintenance coordinator or something, but that can be more—
Might increase their salary a little bit as this extra responsibility, but certainly not probably the $12,000 that they, that they were paid.
Like I say, in my, the only thing I know right now is that everything's on the table. That's how, that's how I'm approaching it. Open to ideas.
As it should be.
Yeah.
I do just want to say, and this is not just because he's in the room, but I've, I've been leaning on our superintendents, but the number I've called more often is Garrett's. And I just really do appreciate how much he's been able to step up in the absence of the DPW director, especially on the facilities front. He was here early this morning to get our elevator here in this building fixed and I appreciate that a lot. So we've got a great staff here and I do just want to appreciate how much that Garrett's been able to do.
I mean, yes, absolutely. So Garrett, I've stayed in touch with always, stayed in touch over the last couple of weeks regularly. Have no, you know, I know we're getting some, some weather this week, often on several times. I have, you know, absolute complete faith in, in your ability to handle all of that. So I do want to thank you for, you know, for all you've done up until now, but stepping up in the way that you have. And I would recognize Tony too. You know, Tony reached out and talked to me about some of the things he's doing and so very much appreciate that. But Garrett, yes, and I've appreciated the communication.
I think we're going in the right direction and definitely getting your input—
Yeah.
On what to do here and people it's going to affect the—
Yeah. It, it really matters.
And I'm glad that everybody's pretty cool about being willing to talk about it.
Yeah. And work together.
Yeah.
It sounds like you're going to have a busy week. Not that you never have an easy week, but— Okay. So we're not making any motions. I'm not prepared to do anything at this point. I, I don't want to wait too long. You know, I get what you're saying, Ed, about having a committee, but I just feel like we, I, I feel that we, we can do this. You know, with input from, you know, our superintendents, the finance committee, the school department on the facility stuff, I really do think that, you know, we can do this. Even, I'd like to talk to Jenny, you know, I want to talk to everybody.
Is there anything that would be useful for me to do before our next meeting?
I don't know exactly what's in here, so I'll take a look at that and I'll, if I, if I feel I need any more information, I'll ask. But this, you know, this looks great. I can't wait to have a little more time with it. So. Anything else? Are we ready for topic five? Okay. Topic five is to discuss the implementation of the Committee for the Comprehensive Plan. So we did talk about creating that committee and we, we talked a little bit before about the composition. So there's some suggested members here, literally with names, but then there's sort of representatives of various committees and departments in town. So you're suggesting that we make the motion to create the committee and then make a motion to have it comprised of these individuals listed here?
Sure. So at the last meeting, we talked about different ways that this implementation work could take and we kept coming back to this idea of a potential committee. And you asked me to, to think about who some members might be. I turned out some names at the meeting, but it made sense to talk with the Planning Board Chair, some other folks who'd been involved with the writing of the plan. So I talked to some folks and put together this list of potential people. It's number, there is a handout in your packet that has a, a list of some potential folks.
Not names, just positions.
Yes.
Yeah.
Positions. So that's, that's up for this, for this board to decide on, on who you'd want. What I am suggesting is a town administrator, the assistant town planner to be involved in some capacity. She could help by staffing the committee or she could be on it as a voting member. That's really up to the board. A representative from the Select Board, I think would make a lot of sense. A representative from the Planning Board— A representative from the planning board, representative from the school committee, somebody from the DPW staff, just because of the amount of work that's kind of land-based, project-based. It'd be great to have that kind of help there. Somebody representing finance and capital planning, maybe even someone who served on both of those committees. I'm not sure who that could be. An at-large representative...
Multiple hats over there.
Yeah, an at-large representative of some kind. And this is a tricky thing. I came up with saying another at-large person, but specifically someone trying to represent either historic preservation, open space, or agriculture, or maybe even all three. So, you know, one at-large, it could be for anything, and one at-large to make sure that we have representation of those three pieces. That was my thoughts. You could even do two at-large for those three things. And then if you get even further, if you don't have the assistant town planner be a voting member.
I would think the assistant town planner would not be a voting member.
Yeah, they'd be staffing.
And so then you could have, because how many people do you have? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Then you could have nine people if you did two at-large to cover those, the historic or agriculture. Agriculture, for sure, needs a representative on here. So, yeah, I think those nine folks with the town planner just not being like a appointed member, but a, you know, staffing member.
Staffing or ex officio, however you want to look at it. You could do the same with town administrator, too, if you wanted. And I'm not sure how many votes a committee like this would be taking as well, which is interesting. I think this committee will do a lot of coordinating and a lot of...
Right.
A lot of...
Communicating.
Yeah, just getting updates from what's going on with these other bodies. There'll be a little less voting potentially. You still don't want it to be too big.
Ed, did you want to add anything to the discussion?
No, I mean, we discussed this prior and to put this committee together, it'd be a prior. I mean, some of the stuff is long-range planning. Some of the stuff might be short planning. But it just, how do we take that plan and try to see if we get some of that stuff accomplished, right? Basically. So I think Greg had volunteered last time, unless I'm wrong on that, to be on the committee. Was that correct?
Sure.
Yes, okay. So, I mean, I say we move ahead and get it done.
Yeah.
Some of the stuff's already being started to get done from the comprehensive plan, too.
Great. So I will make a motion to create Hatfield 2040 Implementation Committee.
Second that.
A motion made and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then I will make a motion to appoint the following members. The town administrator, a planning board representative, a select board representative, which is Greg. I don't know, are we willing to do names tonight?
I think you would just create...
Just create it, okay. So a select board representative, a school committee representative, a DPW staff member, a representative for finance and capital planning, an at-large member, and two at-large members that would specifically be focused on historic preservation, open space, and/or agriculture. That's my motion. And then the, I'm sorry, we would request that the assistant town planner be a support person for this committee. Administrative support person.
I'll second that.
Motion made and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I think that's really great. You know, because the way that the comprehensive plan was set up, one of the things I liked the most is it very clearly identified tasks and it's specifically who's supposed to do it. So we really have a roadmap and a committee to make sure we're following it would be terrific. Okay, so we may, you'll reach out to all of them to see if maybe they could suggest member, who they want to have, and then we could start making appointments, get it going, right?
Now, if, for the ones where you created a representative from the planning board, do they, can they just choose their person? And they don't have to be then voted by this body again for appointment?
No, I think they should, they should be voted by us.
By you.
So they would send a suggestion.
And then you would vote.
And we would vote.
Yep, that sounds great.
Topic six, it looks like we're ready to go on that. That's the town administrator report.
Excellent. So I'm going to keep this pretty brief tonight since we have the budget meetings and everything else. So quick update on some of our projects. I think you've already heard enough about downstairs and the COA flooring.
Good night. Thank you.
But that is hopefully going to be finished by the end of this week. May come and go into the next, but we're in good shape there. We continue to have the progress reported on the Culver project. The biggest issue has just been the weather. And that's, that's the latest in final finishing. I don't know, Garrett, if you had anything else to say on the Culver project right now, but...
I mean, it's going along. It'll be out of, this week it'll be done.
Right.
Oh, really? Even with the weather?
Yep.
I've seen them pumping the cement up there.
Yes.
Oh, so they're filling in around the Culver?
Yeah, they were at our shop today cleaning hoses up and starting back stuff.
Oh, great, wow. Great. Excellent.
Do you need...
I don't think so. Thank you very much.
Yep, you're welcome.
Five and 10 project, I submitted our most recent Masworks report to the state. That was approved and also submitted a request for reimbursement for work that was done in that quarter. I'll have another one to submit for work that was done in January as well, get that reimbursement from the state. I'm in contact with the team there just to make sure that they're aware of what our budget looks like for that and that that's it, making sure that that's completed. So hopefully we'll finish that off in the coming months.
So there's, there's no work happening there. And I know we don't want to get into a whole update on that. But where the pumping station is, there's all still equipment. Do you know what's...
I don't know what they're up to now.
It looks like it's just sort of sitting there, but...
I don't know if they're still waiting on the electrician or what's going on.
Wow.
I'll find out about that.
Okay. Thank you.
And then our project for the wastewater treatment plant, we continue to have good work being done there. The contractor performed very well so far, just a lot of good communication that we get from them, which we really appreciate. And our monthly meetings there have been productive. Any small issues that we have have been dealt with pretty quickly. Now we'll go segue nicely into our grants update since that is a grant-funded project. I just want to acknowledge that there was some news today that came from the federal government that could be incredibly destabilizing for us if that is the path that they really do plan to take, pausing all grants. The USDA has been excellent to work with in this loan that we're receiving for this project. And I don't see how we would fund it without that support. So hope's not a strategy. In this case, we're just hoping that this isn't an actual issue for us. We're going to have to stay on top of it. We've heard from our state, our congressional delegation on this. Markey's team has been in touch, and we really appreciate that. So we have ways to report to our legislators if there's an issue here, but we'll continue to stay on top of that and see where things are going. But there's always some changes in a new administration, and sometimes they can be very destabilizing. This is not one of the things you want to see, so.
I can't imagine that they can't move forward on that stuff, so.
Yeah, you would think.
Yeah.
Rural sewer development is something that's not partisan, but there you go. So right into this grant update, I just wanted to put together on paper some of the grants that are out there, some of which we've applied for already, some of which we are thinking of applying for, planning on applying for, and some that I can't find a project for and don't plan to apply for. We just wanted to make this board aware of. Sometimes I'll see an opportunity and think, I just don't think we're a fit for that. But then you might have a great idea of something you should do with it. So I want to try to do these periodically, either every month or more often, just to be sharing what's out there and getting your thoughts and anyone out there's watching thoughts on what else we could be doing with these. The Mass Trails Grant, I was thinking of as potentially a fit for the Prospect Court Bridge, which was a project that some folks were interested in. CPA, I think, is saying that they're going to take a pass on it this year for a variety of reasons, one of which being that the engineering is old by this point. If it was something that we felt was a large community priority, we could consider submitting it for this Mass Trails Grant and potentially trying to get some engineering updating from that. But I'm just not sure it's as much of a fit of what they're looking for. They're looking for shared use paths that are built in high priority areas. And while I think that the bridge is a really cool project, it doesn't necessarily connect to a lot of other trails in that area. So it's something we could do, but I'm not leaning on it right now. Rural and tribal community grants, this is a federal grant pilot project that closes in April. I can't find something that I think is a good fit for a large transportation infrastructure project in a rural community, which we would qualify for. I also am concerned that maybe this project won't even happen. This grant round might not happen if it's a federally funded one at the moment, but...
And I mean, you know, the maximum award is $750,000. That's not even that much money to do.
Interesting. For a large infrastructure project, it's very little money.
It is, yeah.
Yeah, it's a good point. So I'm not planning on pursuing that one as long as the board's comfortable with that. The PVPC has a number of projects that they're helping us with, and they offer some good kind of in-kind services from their, you know, brain trust there. They have a program called Local Safety Study Candidates. So if there is anything that we have where there's maybe a dangerous intersection or a place where we want to make it safer for bikes, pedestrians, we can submit that on a list to them and they can...
Only bikes and pedestrians, not for just general traffic?
No, all of those things. Dangerous intersections, I mean, for traffic, for vehicular traffic. And then if there's also places for bikes, pedestrians, that's important to them, too. But it would, it's multimodal. I'm not sure if there's any places that come immediately to mind.
I would, I would talk to Garrett.
Yeah, Garrett was going to look into it and see if there's anywhere that he had in mind. Great. The One Stop for Community Growth is a huge catch-all that the Executive Office of Housing and Economic Development launched a few years ago to try to get most of their big grants into one application, which works decently well. There's a number of projects in here, a number of grants in here, including Masworks, Housing Works, some of the bigger infrastructure economic development programs, and then some smaller ones, technical assistance, site readiness, some other things that we might be interested in. So that's specifically useful if we have, you know, development that we think is coming in somewhere or if we have large publicly owned asset that we're interested in doing something with. This just launched, so I'm going to look through the different programs and see if there's anything that matches what we're looking for. Maybe something we can implement from the strategic plan, from the comprehensive plan. But definitely wanted to know if the board or anyone else has had thoughts on this one, too. Definitely talk to the planning board and others on it as well.
Yeah.
Great. So that's a big one, and I always like trying to take advantage of that program. District Local Technical Assistance, we did submit an application for this. The state provides money to the regional planning authorities to do different projects. We are looking for some help from PVPC in following up on a few items in the comprehensive plan. We'd like to do a deeper dive into our zoning to try to look at some ordinances that may make sense to change there. We'd like to have their help in putting together a housing production plan, which would be a logical follow-up from the comprehensive plan. It's something that we haven't done in about eight years, and they are asked, require where the state to do every five. And then we also would look for their help maybe in staffing this committee that we were talking about, just sending in an extra person to help us think through how to use that committee effectively. So we're hoping to be granted that, that could be a great thing to work with.
But it's, it's an in-kind, so...
Essentially, we'd get their staffing help.
Services, okay, gotcha.
I say in-kind because it's hard to put a dollar value on it.
I got you.
It's their hours. They might say like up to $25,000 or something, and that would be how they would bill their time. We don't have to pay for it.
Could I, I'm sorry, could we backtrack to the One Stop? Is there work that could be done in there for, like the siting work for a potential public safety complex at some point?
That's tough because what they're really interested in isn't municipal facilities, unfortunately. It's housing, it's business, economic development. If we really tried hard to make the case for why something would open up more housing or development in the future, saying we need to upgrade, say, our infrastructure or our public safety services, we could try, but they would probably not love that kind of application. There's a lot of interest in the state for housing and economic development, and it's a continual concern that there's just not a lot out there for public buildings. I should probably say, I attended the Massachusetts Municipal Association's Connect 351 Conference Friday and Saturday in Boston. And that was something that came up multiple times from their policy committees, was an interest in having a state funding for these municipal facilities. So that's something we'll continue to push for, and I think would be a great thing for a lot of communities across the state. Okay, so that's One Stop. And for more thoughts on that, happy to talk it through. Community Compact, I'm excited about. This closes soon, February 6th, but there's IT grants up to $200,000, which could be very helpful for us. IT, our IT consultant, Suzer, mentioned some grants that they've done in other communities, specifically on security for buildings. And sometimes that includes security cameras, but mostly the biggest thing is access controls. And in looking at our building security, this came up in an audit of our election security and some other things. We could be doing more to make sure that our buildings are secure, especially town hall. So we plan to apply for a grant that would help install access controls in our buildings, which means either through a keypad or a key fob or a key card, we would give access to certain people to enter the building at different times. So lately, we've used keys, we've given keys to our boarding commission members. With a programmable digital system, we could let the building be open at different times. We know there's public meetings. We could program it so that different people can enter outside of work hours on weekends and others, you know, even if their staff maybe couldn't, if they didn't need 24-hour access, which a key is just always 24-hour access.
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of town hall keys out there. There's a lot of keys out there. I've thought of that many times.
Yeah. So I think it's, I love the open town hall that we have here. I feel like we're in a community where there's a lot of trust and things are really run very well. At the same time, there are certain requirements that say our insurance providers are, as I said, the security audit for the election, they'd like to see a little higher level of security. And I think it's usually a good thing to have. And it also makes it easier for us to make the building open where we want it to be. If we had a digital system, folks could leave the building, but we know it could be open 6:30 to 7:30 for book club or whatever else. So it makes it easier to have an open town hall while also having a secure one. So I'm excited to apply for that. Suzer's going to help with it. They were here today checking out our doors and...
Would that be just this building or could...
Excellent question. It could be anything.
Because we talked to Rec about people, coaches not being able to get into schools and things like that.
Sure, 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 sure. So what it also gives us the ability to do is that other buildings that have, you know, security systems already, whatever keys and things we use here, key cards, we should have the ability to merge it with those other systems that they're using, too. We talked about doing that for fire department and police departments. We should have the ability to do that. And then we're interested in trying to work with the schools as well. So absolutely, we'd want to look for opportunities to do that.
Interesting, okay, thank you.
Cool.
Thanks.
And then Community Compact Fiber Grants...
It's due February 6th.
Yeah, we're going to move a little quickly. But I've written this one before, and then Suzer, as long as they get a estimate for us, it's pretty easy to do. And then the town has never gotten a Community Compact IT grant before, so they think we should be due for getting one.
Nice.
I'm not sure we've applied before, but this would be a great project to take on, I think.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with you that it is kind of a nice feeling that we, but there's some technical reasons, and especially when you mentioned the elections, you know, and that they're suggesting our security be a little better than...
Yeah, it probably makes sense. And I think we can do it in a way that still honors that kind of open community we want to have. And then Community Compact Fiber Grants, I really don't have much to say on because I'm not sure if it's something that we need or would be eligible for at this time, but I'll talk with our IT consultants.
I think we're in pretty good shape.
We're pretty built out.
Yeah.
So...
We're in pretty good shape.
Good. So that's what I have for report today. And if that's helpful, you know, with the grant update, I'll plan to do that more often.
Very helpful, I like that a lot.
Yeah, that was really great.
Good.
When are you sleeping?
My days start early.
I know, I talk to you early sometimes.
Yeah, my, it depends on the one-year-old sleeping schedule.
Yeah, right. Well, I guess we have to thank Francis then.
There you go. She'll, she'll appreciate the attention.
So then we have, I'm sorry, so is that the end of your report?
That's the end of my report.
We just have this Secretary Augustus letter?
Yes, this is pretty straightforward. This is a request from a planning board chair. They were in touch with Habitat for Humanity folks who had a, an ask of a couple of communities, but they were looking for support from this board to have a letter go to Secretary Augustus to put a line item in the Massachusetts budget to try to get some some support to Pioneer Valley Habitat for Humanity, or them looking to build a warehouse in the area that would allow them to help build more homes and everything else. So it seemed like a low lift. I think it's something that, a mission that we can support, Habitat, and it wouldn't really be an ask from us, it's just a.
And they don't know where this would be cited.
We do not at this time.
Ed, any questions about that?
No, I don't.
Do we need to vote to sign it, or can we just, do we just sign it?
I think to to sign a letter of support, probably would be a good idea to have a vote.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we sign this letter of support, requesting an earmark for, from the EO HLC for Pioneer Valley Habitat for Humanity, for the construction of a warehouse somewhere in the Hampshire and Franklin area. Motion made and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And as far as I can tell, that's it?
We've reached the agenda.
Pardon?
We've reached the agenda. I will say for one other thing I wanted to add, which is allowed on the agenda, because it's a scheduling question, we can handle it via email, too, if we wanted to. We had talked about having a joint meeting with the housing authority. We would need to do that in order to appoint another member to that authority. It's a vote between the two boards. We looked at doing it tonight, but we didn't have enough notice for the housing authority needed to do it seven days in advance, based on Massachusetts law. So we had talked about potentially doing it the next meeting on the 11th, but one of the chair of that committee couldn't be be here that night, so we're looking at doing it the February 25th. That's too late.
No, I mean, I, we have, we have no choice, really.
When your next meeting is.
Yeah, so February 25th.
Great, so we'll make sure it's on the agenda.
We're also meeting with the finance committee that night. I have a joint, yeah, so, which is pretty much every meeting from now until.
Yeah, both of them.
Okay, that's fine. I mean, I, you know, I'm anxious to get that position filled, but it is what it is. We have to work with what we've got.
Okay.
Okay, that's all I have. Andrew, great, great job, a lot of, a lot of moving pieces the last couple of weeks, and you've been doing great.
Town hall staff have been wonderful to work with and just very adaptable to all there have been going on, and really I've been able to lean on Karen a lot, so I really appreciate that.
Well, thank you, Karen, too.
Phenomenal.
Karen's steady as a rock.
It's great to work with.
That's what we do here at Hatfield.
It is, it is.
It is, it is. You do.
We support each other.
You do. You've got a great, great, great building here.
Yeah.
And everybody in it, so, all right.
I'll make my motion to adjourn again.
Yeah, I'll second it.
Motion made and second. Any further? Excellent.
Bye, Ed.
Good night. Bye, Ed, feel better.
Can knock me down, but I'll get back up.
Of course you will.
You will.